Thank you, everybody. The clerk will please call the row to ascertain the presence of a quorum.
Counselor Baker.
Here.
Counselor Siomo. Counselor Flaherty.
Here.
Counselor Jackson.
Here.
Counselor Lamatina.
Here.
Counselor Linehan.
Here.
Counselor McCarthy.
Here.
Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Presley. Counselor Wu. Counselor Yancy. And Counselor Zachem. We have a quorum, Mr. President.
I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. I would ask at this time for all counselors and guests to please rise as I invite Counselor Presley to the podium to introduce today's clergy. After the invocation is delivered, I would ask all members and guests to remain standing as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Counselor Presley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll invite our Imam up to join me at the dais. Imam Yahya is the Northeast Regional Imam of the Ahmadiyya Muslim Community of the United States of America, which consists of eight chapters throughout upstate New York and New England. He has served in this position from 2005 through to 2010, and then served in the southeastern states for four years, and we are very happy and pleased that he has returned to the Northeast region. Imam Lukmam, if you can all join if you'd like, is a lifelong advocate for interreligious dialogue. Everyone can come up, please. Is a lifelong advocate for interreligious dialogue as a means of promoting peace in society. Imam Yahya Lukman represents Mirza Massour Ahmad, the worldwide head of the Ahmadiyya Muslim community, a Muslim community which was established in more than 200 countries. Ahmadiyya Muslim Community USA, established in 1920, is the oldest American Muslim organization and has over 70 chapters in the United States. You know, before every meeting, we begin, and we'll do it shortly, by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance, and that last line always resonates with me: "Justice for all." "Justice for all." Well, "justice for all" certainly does begin with "love for all," and the motto of the Ahmadiyya Muslim community is "Love for all, hatred for none." On a personal note, I do want to thank Nasir Rana for coordinating not only today's invocation, but also the blood drive that was held at City Hall last year that I was fortunate enough to speak at. I invited and encouraged all of you, and many did in fact participate, you to participate in the blood drive last April, and so here I'll take this opportunity to invite you to do so again at their blood drive they're holding at the State House on November 8th. It is truly the gift of life. This past weekend, we had a Team Sandy in the Jimmy Walk honoring my mother, who died from leukemia, and which is a blood cancer, and her life was extended because people were selfless enough to donate blood. It is life-saving and life-giving, and so we thank them for this good work. And now I'll bring our Imam up. Thank you.
I greet you all with the traditional Islamic greeting of Assalamu Alaikum Warahmatullahi Wabarakatuhu, which means "Peace and blessings of God be with all of you." Again, I represent the Ahmadiyya Muslim community, which was founded in 1889 by Hazrat Mirza Ghulam Ahmed of Qadiman, India, and he claimed to be the Messiah and reformer of this, spiritual reformer of this age, and his message is that voice, which in these turbulent times everyone is seeking, that where is that voice of peace and love in the Muslim world? So we can say that our community has been promoting this message of peace and love in Islam for 125 years. So with that, I also wish to thank all of you for inviting us and also participating in the Muslims for Life Blood Donation Campaign, which will be held again at the State House on Tuesday, the 18th, November 18th. I would welcome you all to attend and thank you for your participation. I will now recite a prayer from the opening chapter of the Muslim holy book, the Holy Quran. This prayer consists of asking God's guidance to follow the path of those who have come before us and with whom God has been pleased with their actions, and to avoid the pitfalls of those who have earned God's displeasure. So this is the opening chapter of the Holy Quran. I'll recite it in Arabic and then translate it. The translation of these verses of the Holy Quran, this prayer, the opening prayer of the Holy Quran is, "In the name of God, the gracious, the merciful, all praise belongs to God, Lord of all the worlds, the gracious, the merciful, master of the day of judgment. Thee alone do we worship, and thee alone do we implore for help. Guide us on the right path, the path of those on whom thou hast bestowed thy blessings, and not on the path of those who have incurred thy displeasure and those who have gone astray." Amen.
Thank you, Ayman Yahla Lukman, for your inspiring message. At this time, Counselor Presley will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Black, United States of America, public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor Presley. Counselor Presley will escort the Ayman and his delegation outside the chamber at this time. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask Counselor Yancy, who's come forth with a presentation, resolution, and recognition of a longtime Bostonian and contributor to this great city, Marvin Gilmore, who is celebrating his 90th birthday. Counselor Yancy.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. It is indeed an honor and privilege for me to read the resolution offered by this body honoring a great man who has, who's actually the grandson of slave, who rose to the highest heights in the corporate community and the real estate community, but more important than that, in a community that fights for justice every day. He recently was the subject of a biography that coincidentally was released on his 90th birthday. Relax, I'm not going to read his entire biography today, but this is available for purchase, of course, and I know Mr. Gilmore is going to make a special presentation when he, when he speaks. I've known Marvin since the 1960s, when I was a student at Tufts University, and he persuaded me to invest in a bank. It was called Unity Bank and Trust. It was one of my first and only investment in stocks. But it was, he was a trailblazer then, and he continues to be a trailblazer. And all of you missed a fantastic party at the Hyatt this past Monday evening, where he had hundreds of luminaries celebrating his great accomplishments. Without further ado, City of Boston and City Council. Whereas Marvin Gilmore has been part of the Community Development Corporation of Boston since 1969 as general manager and president and CEO, and whereas the Community Development Corporation under Mr. Gilmore's leadership has worked to bring businesses and jobs to inner-city sites such as companies as Morgan Memorial Headquarters, the Digital Equipment Corporation, and the Boston University Biomedical School. And whereas, Mr. Gilmore is also co-founder of the first African-American-owned bank in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and whereas, Mr. Gilmore has been recognized by President Bill Clinton for his services to this country in World War II, and as a loyal voice and representative for his fellow veterans. And whereas, Mr. Gilmore has served in the 458th Battery A Anti-Aircraft Artillery Battalion, and he has served on D-Day's at Normandy, Utah, and Omaha beaches during World War II, and whereas, Mr. Gilmore in 2010 became the first African-American in New England to be decorated with the French Legion of Honor Medal for his service during the Normandy Invasion of 1944. And whereas, Mr. Gilmore is the founder and owner of the Western Front in Cambridge at 343 Western Avenue, and whereas, the City of Cambridge in 2004 named the Western Front's location at the intersection of Putnam and Western Avenue in Cambridge as Marvin Gilmore Square in Mr. Gilmore's honor, and whereas, Mr. Gilmore has been the recipient of many awards, recognitions, and honors, recognizing his role in economic development, music, and coalition building. Be it therefore resolved that the Boston City Council in meeting assembled congratulates Mr. Marvin Gilmore on his 90th birthday for his leadership in economic development in the City of Boston, and be it further resolved that the Boston City Council in meeting assembled proclaims Tuesday, September 23rd, 2014, as Marvin Gilmore Day in the City of Boston. So, just give him.
And whereas, I am still here in 90 years, beautiful, seen a lot in life, gone through a lot, survivor of life, and whereas, I want to present this book just out of heart off the press to our council president, Bill Linehan.
Thank you, Marvin.
You're welcome. And whereas, I have seen this city change so much, more African-American, Tito Jackson, young, and still an old timer right here.
I'm still a young man.
Well, I want to thank all of you for allowing me to speak today, just a few words. Say I thank all of you, and I'm still working, still doing what I need to do. I'm still very young, I still drive fast cars, Jaguars. People say, "Well, how do you do it?" I'm not old yet. You're old until you get old, but I'm very proud of the City Council for the first time saying to me, "Thank you." I'm also saying to you, "Thank you for the good work you're doing in this community." And I really, I've seen a lot from the days of Louis Day Hicks, I go way back, where I had to face this chamber to get the cross-town industrial part. It was tough being black. It was tough trying to get things done, but there's a change now in this community. There's a change now in the Boston City. This city, and so much has gone, 90 years, I've seen it all, but I want to thank all of you allowing me to be here, to recognize, to say, "Thank you, Marvin," and I'm saying thank you to the Boston City Council. Thank you very much.
I'm up for a photo, and while you're coming to join us, there is a special photograph in the biography of Marvin Gilmore that includes a photo of President Obama in him, taken in Normandy, France during the most recent celebration. So again, he's been, he's been in even better company than the City Council. Come and join us. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Yancy. Thank you for that important presentation and recognition of a man who's done much for this city. I met Marvin 25 years ago when he was a kid, as a member of the New Market Business Association. He was active then, played a significant role in, in moving Lower Roxbury forward in the economic development world. It's an honor to receive this book from him. I hope he signed it. He did. Awesome. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of last meetings will stand, approved. Seeing and hearing no objections, the minutes are so approved. Communications from his honor, the mayor, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, I'll read both matters.
Please do.
Docket number 1492, message in order to reduce the FY15 appropriation for reserve for collective bargaining by $2,209,941 to provide funding for the Boston Public Health Commission for the FY15 salary increases contained within the collective bargaining agreement between the Boston Public Health Commission and the Boston EMS Division of the Boston Police Patrolmen's Association. Docket number 1493, message in order approving a supplemental appropriation of $2,209,941 for the Boston Public Health Commission's for FY15 cost items contained within the collective bargaining agreement between the Boston Public Health Commission and the Boston EMS Division of the Boston Police Patrolmen's Association filed in the office of the City Clerk on September 22nd, 2014.
Docket 1492 and 1493 will be assigned to the Committee on Ways and Means. Reports of public officers and others, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President.
Please read 1494 through 1497.
Docket number 1494, notice received from the mayor of his absence from the city from Monday, September 15th, 2014, until Tuesday, September 16th, 2014. Docket number 1495, notice received from the mayor of the absence from the city from September 18th, 2014, until September 29th, 2014. Docket number 1496, communication was received from the mayor regarding the resignation of the school committee member, Margaret McKenna. Docket number 1497, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Louis Roach to the Boston School Committee nominating panel.
As President of the Boston City Council and Acting Mayor, docket 1494 through 1497 will be placed on file. Reports of committees, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 1255, the Committee on Government Operations and the Committee on Public Safety, to which was referred on July 30th, 2014, docket number 1255, order approving a petition for a special law regarding the appointment of special police officers in the City of Boston submits a report recommending the home rule petition ought to pass in a new draft.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, Counselor Flaherty, on docket 1255.
Thank you, Mr. President, and take this opportunity to commend you and your efforts, also all of our colleagues, but specifically our colleague, City Councilor Steve Murphy, who's the Chair of the Public Safety Committee. This was a joint effort, along with the great work of Captain Tim Murray, I know who's in the audience. I see his father, Don, is here as well, Donnie Murray, in a while. Great to see you and welcome back, as well as Tommy Neef from the Patrolmen's Association, Jack Kirman from the Superior Offices, and also we had representatives from the detectives, as well as Mam Leo, coming here to recognize that there is a need to have a special police force in the City of Boston under the supervision of our, of our Commissioner, Commissioner Evans. I know that over 175 cities and towns in Massachusetts have enacted similar laws allowing retirees to perform details. I can tell you that the last several years, thousands of details have gone unmanned, which is a huge disservice to us, not only from a public safety percent, but also we get, the city gets a percentage of those details. Special police officers will serve for one year, and their appointment would be renewed each year at the discretion of the Commissioner. No police officer shall be appointed as a special officer after retirement of more than four and a half years. Section 1 now more clearly states that the Police Commissioner has sole authority to confirm each individual special police officer, and some of the whereas's that we had amended to be more accurate. I think there's a real demand for establishing a police force here, establishing a special force in conjunction with the Boston Police Department, both from recently retired cops who are seeking part-time employment, but also from private companies that need detailed support to enhance public safety in the streets of Boston. I'm recommending that docket 1255 pass in a new draft and urge my colleagues to support, and at this time will defer it to the Chair of Public Safety, City Councilor Steve Murphy. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. This effort is a no-brainer for the City of Boston. There's no one that knows the streets and the neighborhoods of the City of Boston better than our own police officers, who've been trained and experienced policing those very streets, and we are just going to join a group of 175 other cities and towns that have availed themselves of this type of legislation. Special police officers after retirement age can be hired and trained by the Police Department and go out and augment our public safety efforts in the most professional of ways, and I co-signed the committee report with my good colleague, Counselor Flaherty. It should have been done a long time ago, and we would have had details that right now are unfilled, be filled at no cost to taxpayers of Boston. So without delay, we should pass this and send it on to the mayor and get this act on the books and join the 175 other cities and towns that have had the good sense to approve this type of legislation on their own. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. At this time, Counselor Flaherty moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1255 in a new draft. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 1255 has been passed in a new draft. Just a clerical matter, Madam Clerk, would you read 1497? The, I've been, it's been brought to my attention by two colleagues that it is Lois Roach, not Louis Roach. Thank you. Matters recently heard for possible action, Madam Clerk. Please read dockets 0362 and 0363.
Docket number 0362, audit for hearing to review the fiscal year 2013 audited financial statements, and docket number 0363, audit for hearing to review the fiscal year 2014 budget.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Post Audit and Oversight, Counselor Yancy, on dockets 0362 and 0363.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd like to thank the central staff for their assistance in facilitating dozens of hearings as we review each and every city department in terms of their performances in 2013 and 2014. That process continues. Tomorrow morning at 10:00, I invite all of our colleagues to discuss the Department of Neighborhood Development, where we'll review their activities for the last two years. Mr. President, even though I've been a member of this body for many, many years, I still find that I learn interesting things about each of the departments once they're given the opportunity to discuss their goals and objectives, and which ones they achieve, which ones they failed to achieve, as well as, of course, the variance that exists in most departments with regards to the approved and adopted budget and the actual expenditures. And while fiscal year 2014 hasn't yet been closed out, it will be soon, the preliminary numbers indicate that the city did experience a significant surplus, and those numbers will be verified very shortly. But I think it's very important that we give the public an opportunity to take an in-depth look at the financial operation of every department, because after doing that, they will know how their tax dollars are being spent, and I want to thank the administration, the cooperation of each and every department head that has done a great job in offering testimony and discussing how we're going to deal with some of the challenges. As I've mentioned time and time again in the past, Mr. President, one of the most significant challenges that Boston faces is around the issue of disparity and lack of representation of people of color in the highest levels of city government. There's been significant improvement over recent years, but judging by a review of the top paid positions in every department, we still have a long way to go to reach the point that the City Council and the mayor says is important, that is, to have every department to be truly reflective of the demographic and gender... department to be truly reflective of the demographic and gender makeup of the city of Boston. We're not there yet, but progress is being made. So I ask that both of these matters be remanded back to committee, and I invite all of you to join me tomorrow morning in these chambers at 10:00 a.m. as we discuss the Department of Neighborhood Development. Thank you very much.
Thank you much, Councilor Yancey, for your effort in this regard on behalf of all of us. Docket 0362 and 0363 will remain in the Committee on Post Audit and Oversight. Madam clerk, please read docket 1162, 1321, and 1398.
Docket 1162, petition of Paul Reva Transportation LLC for a license to operate motor vehicles for the carriage of passengers for hire over certain streets in Boston. Docket number 1321, petition of Charles River Transportation Management Association for a license to operate motor vehicles for the carriage of passengers for hire over certain streets in Boston. And docket number 1398, Boston Classic Tours for a license to operate motor vehicles for the carriage of passengers to hire over certain streets in Boston.
The chair recognizes the chair of the Committee on City, Neighborhood Services, and Veterans Affairs, Councilor McCarthy, on docket 1162, 1321, and 1398.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We had three hearings held yesterday. Docket number 1162, the petition for Paul Reva Transportation LLC. This is an existing route. Boston Police Department and Boston Transportation Department were here and agreed that this is a needed service. I recommend that the petition be granted and a license issued with certain conditions, which if not agreed to or fully implemented by the petitioner, will be rendered license void. On docket number 1321, petition of Charles River Transportation Management Association, even though this is an existing route, 90% of the route is actually in Cambridge, but the 10% that's in Boston is in and around the Boston Garden, the hospital district. Boston Transportation, as well as Boston Police Department, have some issues with traffic and curbside use. I have spoken to Councilor Zachem, as it is in his district, and we'll have a meeting with them, and I'm looking to have that put back into committee for further consideration. Docket number 1398, petition of Boston Classic Tours, they withdrew the petition, and I hope that that is granted and the matter be placed on file, Mr. President.
Great. Thank you, Councilor McCarthy. Councilor McCarthy moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1162. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 1162 has been passed. Madam clerk, docket 1321 will remain in the Committee on City and Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs. And madam clerk, docket 1398 will be placed on file. Motions, orders, and resolutions, madam clerk.
Docket number 1498, Councilor Linehan offered the following ordinance, amending Chapter 16 of the City of Boston Code, CBC 16-12.38A, personal assistive motability devices in the city of Boston.
Chair recognizes President Linehan.
This matter won't be as volatile as the last couple that I've raised in the chamber, I promise. This is, first, I'd like to congratulate, he's done significant work on this particular matter, and it's about segways and how they operate within the city streets and sidewalks of the city of Boston. And this particular order is here to alter the existing regulation to allow seniors an opportunity to use the sidewalks with a Segway vehicle. Presently, people with disabilities are already exempt from motor vehicles on sidewalks, and this particular piece of legislation is for those who are 70-plus. If you think about it, a Segway is something that you stand on. It's something that moves and can get you in and out of small places. You're not down below the crowd, you're at eye level with folks. Many seniors have the ability to walk, but maybe two, three, four, five blocks, and they'd like to walk the greenway, or they'd like to walk from their downtown home to the Boston Common, or they'd like to walk all the way over to the South Boston waterfront, or into other neighborhoods, or even traverse the Emerald Necklace. And these sorts, they're limited, and they're not allowed to do this now based on the stipulation that's in the ordinance as it reads. And I just think, I think of Councilor Yancey and I, not too far from now, where we may be limited in our ability to have long extended walks. And I would love to be able to, to be able to go see the places that I've always visited, to see the change in this beautiful city, and to be able to traverse, like all others do, standing up tall, walking or riding in a same easy motion on the sidewalks of our city. So this is to entertain discussion in that regard, and hope that you will either sign on or show up to the hearing and support this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Docket 1498 will be assigned to the Committee on Government Operations. Madam clerk, please read docket 1499.
Docket number 1499, Councilor Jackson offered the following order for hearing regarding school disciplinary policies and practices of the Boston Public Schools.
Chair recognizes Councilor Jackson on docket 1499.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. On July 1st, 2014, Chapter 222 kicked in, and that actually is a change to school disciplinary policies in the state of Massachusetts. Currently, we have schools, and this actually applies to public as well as charter schools. And I had the opportunity to visit one actual charter school that actually suspends two-thirds of their students. And that's out-of-school suspension. And so this new disciplinary policy actually changes how you get suspended, what happens when you're suspended, and in particular, it requires that the principal notify the superintendent in writing if they are going to suspend a kindergartner through third grader. We actually have schools that are suspending kindergartners, and first graders, and second graders. We need to be about young people being in the classroom, having the opportunity to actually learn, and having the opportunity, as many of us did, if you acted up, I don't know about you guys, I didn't get thrown out of school that often, in-school suspension was literally the worst thing ever for me. So I think it's really critical that we begin to look at this. We also begin to look at the disparities that exist, and how young people getting into trouble in this way really leads them into a pipeline that could lead them into incarceration. This is a really critical component, and we know that really education is the civil rights issue of our time, and if we can actually get this right, then a lot of the other things that we see in our community, and ills that we see in our community, can be changed. And so I really want to look at how the Boston Public Schools is complying with the implementation of this new state law, and how we are keeping young people out of their homes, and actually in the classrooms. We live in a day and age when many folks, when they go home, unlike us, we probably would play with toys, but they're able to get on the internet and play video games, and it's almost a bonus for them to be left at home rather than to be in the school setting. Absolutely critical, and so we're really looking at how we, how this is being implemented in the Boston Public Schools. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Jackson. Councilor Yancey.
Thank you very much. Mr. President, I rise to commend the chair of the Education Committee. I think this is a very important issue to review. Unlike the days when I was going to the Boston Public Schools, we no longer have corporal punishment in the elementary school grades. But I think we've come a long way in that regard, but Councilor Jackson does point out the life-changing impact of suspensions within our schools. So I think it's a subject worthy of a public hearing, and hopefully all of our colleagues and the general public will participate and take a close look at this issue. So I'd like to have my name added. Again, I commend the chairman of the Education Committee for bringing this before us.
Thank you, Councilor Yancey. Madam clerk, please add Councilor Yancey's name, Councilor Wu's name, Councilor Presley's name, Councilor Lamatina's name, Councilor Zachem.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to commend Councilor Jackson on this order. I certainly share some of his recollections of the disciplinary practices when I was in the elementary school grades, and, you know, I think it's incredibly important, you can hardly open up a newspaper these days without hearing about the disparities in school suspension based on race, socioeconomic status, and as Councilor Jackson said, this is certainly one of the major civil rights issues of our time. So I join him in sharing these concerns and making sure that the Boston Public Schools, a system that we have a big role to play in, is doing this in a fair, even-handed way, looking to, you know, the best social science, and making sure that where someone comes from, what they look like, has no bearing on the disciplinary practices of their schools. So I look forward to the hearing, and ask that my name please be added.
Thank you, Councilor Zachem. Madam clerk, please add Councilor Zachem's name and Councilor Flaherty's name. Docket 1499 is assigned to the Committee on Education.
Docket number 1500, Councilor Zachem offered the following order for hearing regarding street traffic in the West End neighborhood.
Chair recognizes Councilor Zachem on docket 1500.
Thank you, Mr. President. I asked for this hearing because there's a growing concern in the West End neighborhood, which is not alone in the city of Boston. I believe South Boston may be the only neighborhood under similar development pressure these days. You know, hundreds, if not thousands of new, thousands of new residents are coming, hundreds to thousands of new apartment units are being built, offices are being built, and this is a sign of a booming economy in the city of Boston. But as anyone who's tried to go to a Celtics or a Bruins game, or an event down at the Garden can tell you, the streets around the West End, whether it's Martha Road, whether it's Sturro Drive, La Masne Way, are often jammed, and there are many residents, senior citizens, young people, families, who actually cannot get in and out of their homes by car for quite many days of the year, whether it's games, whether it's rush hours. So I think it's long overdue for the city council, in conjunction with the BRA, the Transportation Department, development community, and other interested parties, especially neighborhood residents, to look at what is being done in this community, what the impact is. Because all too often, when we see a traffic study for one particular development, it looks at the impact of, there's 300 new units here, what's that impact? But when you have over 1,000 new units of housing coming in, we need to look broadly at what's going on, what can be done to mitigate this, whether it's through road design, signaling, through, you know, more mass transit options, which the West End has quite a few of. I want to make sure that our neighborhood voices are heard, and that the planners upstairs, the planners at the BTD, the BRA, and the development community are aware of these concerns, and are working with the community to address them. So I look forward to the hearing, and certainly hopeful, hopeful find some solutions for the West End that hopefully can be applied to other areas in the city of Boston. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Zachem. Councilor Murphy. Please add Councilor Murphy's name, add Councilor Presley's name, Councilor Wu, Councilor Yancey, Councilor Lamatina, Councilor Jackson, Councilor Flaherty, Councilor Baker, and please add my name. Docket 1500 is assigned to the Special Committee on Transportation, Public Infrastructure, Planning, and Investment. Madam clerk, personnel orders.
Docket number 1501, Councilor Linehan or Councilor Presley?
Councilor Presley.
Oh, yes, thank you, Mr. President. I move for substitution of personnel order, please.
Yes. So Councilor Presley moves for substitution of personnel order on docket 1501. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 1501 has passed. I'm informed by the clerk that there is one late-file matter, which in absence of objection will be added to today's agenda.
Would you like me to read first and last?
Yes. Hearing no objection, the matters are so added. The clerk will read the first late-file matter, and the only late-file matter.
Thank you, Mr. President. Offered by Councilor Stephen J. Murphy in the city of Boston, home rule petition, whereas the city of Boston currently follows Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 90, Section 18, which allows for the posting of numerical limits on the typical speed limit sign, and requires such speed limit to be based upon an engineering study and approved by the Registry of Motor Vehicles and Mass Highway. Therefore, be it ordered that a petition to the general court, accompanied by a bill for a special law relating to the city of Boston, to be filed with an attested copy of this order, be and hereby is approved under Clause 1 of Section 8 of Article 2, as amended, of the Articles of Amendment to the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, to the end that legislation be adopted precisely as follows, except for clerical or editorial changes of form only, a petition for a special law regarding an act concerning local speed zoning procedures in the city of Boston.
Councilor Murphy on the first late-file matter.
Thank you, Mr. President. 14 years ago, the late Councilor Brian Honan and myself cosponsored something similar to this. We sent it to Beacon Hill and never heard from it again. It was a home rule petition. It was to lower speed limits in the neighborhoods of Boston. And that particular issue was blocked by a chairman of a House committee that lived in Lenox, Massachusetts. Now, what the hell a guy from Lenox should have anything to do with regulating a speed limit in the city of Boston's neighborhoods, I don't know. And I'm coming at it a little differently this time. We're all out there, we're a destination city. We know that we're hearing from people in our neighborhoods that people are flying down residential streets to get here for work. We know that our population goes from just shy of 640,000 residents to about 1.5 million people every day that work in the city of Boston. We also know, anecdotally, that about 250,000 of those folks are on the MBTA. Well, that's assuming that we have two people per vehicle coming in, and we don't. Most people are driving on the highways, one person in a car. You would think that there are in excess of 325,000 motor vehicles coming through every neighborhood of the city of Boston at high rates of speed, because they're late, they're running late, they've got to get to work by a certain hour, and it's our neighborhoods, and our pedestrians, and our constituents that suffer. And I feel that we have to go at it again. Right now, the, in order to change a speed limit on a local roadway, not only do we need legislative approval, but the city of Boston has to do an engineering and traffic study, produce a report on that study, submit the report to the Mass Registry of Motor Vehicles and Mass Highway, wait for their response, and hopefully approval, and then we can go and post signs. This would cut two important steps out of that. It would take Registry of Motor Vehicles and Mass Highway out of the equation, where I don't believe they belong in the first place. It would allow the Commissioner of Transportation in the city of Boston to have sole jurisdiction to determine and establish speed limits within the city of Boston on roadways under its care. And we all know that we're talking about roadways that we maintain, that we salt and plow, we repave. So those are our roadways in our city, and it's something that we should be able to do without interference from the state legislature. So I'm hoping that my colleagues will sign on to this home rule petition, and we'll go up and try to make that change through the process on Beacon Hill. I don't know how successful we'll be, but it's worth, it's worth a try in the issue of public safety in our neighborhoods. And I know that a lot of our neighborhood associations are asking that of us at nightly meetings. Can we help them make our streets safer? And this is one way to do it. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Murphy. Councilor McCarthy.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you very much, Councilor Murphy. I don't think there's anybody on this floor who would argue that one of our biggest allies I don't think there's anybody on this floor who would argue that one of our biggest allies as a city counselor is our community service officers. And in District 5, Rosneil-Mattapan and High Park in particular, a lot of streets have become cut-throughs. And when these cut-throughs happen, kids get hurt, people get hurt. Our community service officer, Eddie Roach, when we meet out there all the time, we had a meeting just a couple of weeks ago on a side street, and people said that people are speeding, people are speeding. And as usual, everything gets a little escalated. They're going 70 miles an hour, they're going 80 miles an hour. Of course, they're not going that fast, but it seems that fast. Eddie Roach always jumps in his cruiser and drives by the people going 30 miles an hour. 30 miles an hour in a Crown Vic is moving, is moving. And we sit there, we look at these people and say, nothing, we can't do anything about it. So we're going to wait until a kid gets hit on a side street? I can't agree with Counselor Murphy more. This is something that's an easy thing to do. We should push it through as fast as we can. I'm happy to sign on.
Thank you, Counselor McCarthy. Please add Counselor McCarthy's name, add my name, add Counselor Baker's, Counselor Siomo's, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Jackson, Counselor Presley, Counselor Wu, Counselor Yancey, Counselor Zakeham. And Counselor Lamatina, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Firstly, I commend Counselor Murphy. As you know, I was a Director of Operations in the Transportation Department, and I would get a lot of requests, like we all do, in regards to the speed limit. And so folks would say, can you put up a speed limit sign? And I would say, well, the speed limit sign would be 30 miles per hour, that's it. Unless posted, the speed limit is 30 miles per hour. And like Counselor McCarthy said, that is fast. For a lot of residential neighborhoods, that is really fast. As Counselor Murphy mentioned, to change a speed limit, you have to go through that process. So it'd be really nice for the process, and Boston would be 20 miles an hour unless posted. So I want to commend Counselor Murphy for all yous signing on. And we should contact our state legislatures to make sure they help us pass this, because this is very, very important for the people that live in our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lamatina. That first late-file matter will be placed in the Committee on Government Operations. At this time, is there anybody wishing to pull a matter from the green sheets? Counselor Baker?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask to go to docket 1225, page 8 of 12. Madam Clerk, if we could pull the Housing Committee to see if we can speak on this matter.
Thank you. Did I read it into record first?
Yeah, please read it into the record, Madam Clerk, and then pull the committee.
In the Committee on Housing, docket number 1225, sponsored by the mayor, message and order authorizing the Department of Neighborhood Development to apply for, accept, and expend federal fiscal year 2014 continuum of care for $24 million from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to support programs that provide services and housing to the homeless. This was referred to committee on July 30th, 2014. A hearing was held on September 16th, 2014, and it is now being pulled from committee. I will now pull the Committee on Housing. Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Yancey? Counselor Yancey, yes. Counselor Siomo? Counselor Siomo, yes. Counselor Murphy? Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor Zakeham? Counselor Zakeham? We have unanimous consent from the Committee on Housing, Mr. President.
Counselor Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a short hearing on this last week, and for different reasons, I decided to keep it in committee. The continuum of care program is a program of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development designed to provide housing and supportive services for homeless individuals and families. The funds are allocated through the National Annual McKinley Homeless Continuum of Care Funding Competition. This application secured funding from HUD's 2013 allocation for the continuum of care program. The up to $25 million amount in the order to apply, accept, and expend the funds is estimated based on HUD's funding notice. The actual amount of the, the amount the city is eligible to apply for is $23,756,421. The continuum of care program funding in the 2014 competition. The funds will be used to renew 55 existing grants that serve 2,411 participants, including 1,767 chronically homeless at any given point in time. The grant terms for the renewal award for the one year, the city will seek to continue funding for them annually. In addition to this amount, the city may apply for up to $250,000 in continuum of care planning funds to fully implement homelessness, emergency assistance, and rapid transition to housing. The acronym is H.A.R.S. The act requirements across the homeless assistance system, if HUD makes this funding opportunity available through 2004 competition. The funds will be used only for rental assistance, leasing assistance, transitional housing, and supportive services. So I ask at this point, we take a vote on this and accept this, this docket, please.
Thank you, Counselor Baker. Counselor Baker moves for passage of docket 1225. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and docket 1225 has been passed. There are seven late-file matters, which in absence of objection, will be added to the consent agenda. Seeing, hearing, no objections, the matters are so added. The chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay, and the ayes have it, the consent agenda is adopted. Counselor Jackson, for what purpose do you rise?
Consent to, unanimous consent to make a statement.
You have the floor.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to inform my colleagues about a really urgent and sad issue that's actually happening in Roxbury. We got word on Monday that Jewish Memorial Hospital is slated to be closed. I was there yesterday, and that means 400 jobs in Roxbury that would be lost based on, based on this. It's a really difficult situation involving Santander, which is one of the, one of the banks that is actually really prevalent in the city of Boston, as well as some of the issues that are happening with the current healthcare environment that is actually putting pressure, put so much pressure on this hospital, that they've indicated to the Department of Public Health that they would be closing their doors. We were there yesterday with the rapid response team and just people who are heavy-hearted, mostly not for their jobs, but actually for the patients that they serve. It's a hospital that's near and dear to my heart. It's actually where my father was last cared for, and actually, he passed away. We all know many people who have been through Jewish Memorial Hospital. And I would just ask for the continued support of the council in order to push, one, the larger companies, including partners, and I'm going to call them out right now, to step forward and help with this organization, as well as to make sure that the people currently at the helm do the right thing with the patients there, but also the workers there, and to give them their two months and to allow them to transition. There will be a job fair on this Friday onsite, but it's really unfortunate to see such a longstanding healthcare organization actually put forward papers to fold. So I just wanted to make folks knowledgeable about what's going on there and just, you know, with a heavy heart, know that you're going to probably be receiving phone calls from many people in that space. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Counselor Yancey, for what purpose do you rise?
Unanimous consent to make a brief statement.
You have the floor.
Thank you. I rise in response to a colleague from Roxbury. The Jewish Memorial Hospital was near and dear to my family as well. Both my mother and her twin sister were treated there shortly before their passing as well. And I would like to see the City Council get involved in whatever way we can. I recall the debate we had many years ago concerning another closing of Colonial Meat Packing. And this body was very bold and aggressive in terms of proposing that that particular facility be taken over by city government. Eventually, that did not happen, but we were able to save many of the jobs there by active involvement. I'm not sure what it is the City Council can do, aside from controlling some of the established medical institutions to take an active role in preventing this actual closure. I too learned about the closing this morning in the media, but I am deeply concerned and would like to join our colleague in Roxbury and put our heads together to see what, if anything, we can do in terms of taking an active role to block the closing if we can, but if not, to see if we can persuade other hospitals to pick up the slack. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Yancey. Counselor Murphy, for what purpose do you rise?
Mr. President, I just ask for a brief recess, where I can speak to you and Counselors Jackson and Yancey at the podium.
Sure. Have a quick recess. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, at 12:00 noon. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned.